All right, good evening. For the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for March or May 14th, 2024, to order at 6:33. First order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on 4/23/24. Do you guys have a chance to look over?
I did, minor amendments, Carol.
Okay.
In item, item one, it says, made a motion to add two items, but it only mentioned one and then said we didn't add either items. I think you want to mention the second item. That was the update on Route 154, and we decided to do it in a couple of weeks.
Okay. You know, I read that again today, and I said the same thing. Don't mention the other, so good catch. We won't change that.
The other one is item six, and I'm not sure it captured the discussion. A hundred percent accurately. I don't believe we decided to go, it suggested to do the 20%, and then, you know, and Dwayne did ask to see it. I did take a position not in support of the public arts. So I don't know if that would reflect that discussion. You know. And we tabled the public arts till we got more information, which is happening tonight.
So what about number six? Where are you looking? I see exact figures will be discussed at a future meeting. I just had made a motion or a suggestion, so I put that in here, but nobody had agreed with my suggestion.
Right, so what motions have we passed then? We only passed it on the ARPA funds? Is that what this is reflecting on the $100,000, I'm sorry?
The motion to go to the Board of Finance allocating the $100,000 from ARPA for upgrains at the transfer station.
Okay, that's what's passed.
I thought that was the only motion that was made in that.
All right, all right, then I'm fine with that, if that's it. It's just on here, you know, we said we'd talk about the art presentation more, but in my discussion.
I can go back and rewrite the paragraph, that's fine.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
And that's it, the rest looks great.
Okay, so with these corrections, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, audience of citizens. Do we have anyone here that'd like to speak to the board? Please state your name. Sure, come on up.
Richie Naga, I'm the chairman of the Deep River Veterans Memorial Green Committee.
Okay.
And I'm happy and proud to report that all the major work the Memorial Green has finally completed. The granite blocks that were installed back in 2021 that had the names misspelled have been removed, and granite blocks with the correct spelling have been installed. We also had some that were missing from the original list. They have been made, and they have been installed. We also found out that since the original blocks were installed, we came up with the names of three veterans that were not on the original list. So granite blocks were made for those, and they've been installed. Also something the committee voted to do, because back in 1980, Congress voted to recognize the Merchant Marines that served in World War II, and gave them the same privileges as the veterans that served. So instead of granite bricks, we have eight by eight granite blocks made up with the names of the three men from Deep River that served in the Merchant Marines. Their names, Merchant Marines in World War II, and they have been installed. A lot of thank yous need to go out. Joyce Paratus for helping me get the granite blocks, again, engraved. Kathy Schultz for reminding us that the Merchant Marines needed to be recognized. Carol for working with me to get the blocks installed, and to Ed.
Field.
Eddie Fields for finally getting the work done. It's been a long, long process, and I am so happy now to have it, have it done. And it looks beautiful. I don't know, did Eddie, Eddie send you a picture on your cellphone?
I don't know, he was going to, so I'll offer it.
Well, I invite anybody, take a walk over there, and if they don't, to show up a memorial. But I mean, Deep River has a lot to be proud of. So many towns have memorials that recognize the veterans that served in wartime. But how many of them have memorials like we have with the names of the veterans that served in peacetime? And how many have the names of veterans that served in the Merchant Marines? I mean, that is, like somebody once told me, that is the most beautiful, that most unique memorial that, you know, he said that something that does not look like it belongs in a cemetery. All right, got that done.
Well, thank you for all your hard work, Richie. Worked on that for several years.
I know, it's been, it's been a long haul, it's been long. Lot of driving, trying to find a match for the granite blocks that were originally made. I mean, trip to Ledger, trip to New London. I finally got Connecticut Stone and Milford. They had something that was very, very close, and you have to get down on your hands and knees to notice the difference. Shelley Brothers and Guilford, Dwayne Raven, and like I said, it's a big, big vacuum. Chris Crass, she really, she really, really helped me out. She put the pressure on Connecticut Stone, she put the pressure on the Shelley Brothers, and yet, I mean, I picked up the granite blocks last September with Bill Verdi. And they'd been sitting in my yard until I met Carol in January, and we finally came up with Eddie Fields to have them installed.
And thank goodness Eddie had just retired, so he had some time.
He had something to do.
And Joyce just walked in, he just gave you a shout out for helping with the granite blocks, so.
I told her when the project was done, I was gonna buy the flowers, so I owe her flowers.
All right, there you go, and you're on, you're on record now, Richie.
It's on TV, so.
All right, Memorial Day, parade, American Legion. We step off at 1:00 in Winthrop from the Baptist Church. And at 9:00 on Monday Memorial Day, we step off from Devitt Field, okay? And the last I have is the flags on Main Street. Two Sundays ago, Dave Bifford and I put up the flags that we had. Last year, the American Legion went in partnership with the town, and we started replacing all the old wooden poles. And this year again, we went in partnership with the town, and we're short 12 or 13 poles and flags. And as soon as they come in, hopefully by Memorial Day, we'll get them up. The only four wooden poles that are still left are down on the south end of Main Street. And I, excuse me, I have the four aluminum poles sitting in my cellar, but I'm not gonna worry about changing them till next year. So next year, from the south end of town all the way up to the north end, we'll have nice shiny aluminum poles. And the wooden ones, they can go all the way back to Donruth. You know, they've probably been up 25, 30 years, and they, they needed to be replaced. So thank you to the town, and I hope everybody enjoys them, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and hope to see you on Memorial Day.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Take care.
Anyone else, audience of citizens?
Yeah, sure. So the historical society swapped out the case, because we needed the case for an exhibit. This case can remain here permanently if you want. If you don't want it, let us know, and we'll remove it, but it right now has the time capsule stuff. And you folks decide if you want to have a, either rotating historical exhibit there or not. But this case is, you can stay if you want to stay.
All right, thank you. I noticed it was a different case. Harry, good. Anyone else? We have some invited folks that are on the agenda. So Laura, are you speaking to the early voting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So when, no, when you're, one at a time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so moving on, number four, appointments. We have one appointment tonight, Peter Donello offered and written in about his interest to be on the Transfer Station Committee. So I'd like to have a motion to appoint Peter to the Transfer Station Advisory Committee.
I'll make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Great. Okay, number five, ARPA funds. We're here to hear a presentation from, about public art, the proposal put in by Brett Thompson. Brett, you got the floor.
Thank you. You're welcome. I'll sit next to you. So, this project was modeled after one in Mansfield. I was asked by the previous first selectmen to work on a project like this, so I reached out to them. The project is this. It's to bring public art into spaces, public spaces downtown, maybe at Devitt's Field, maybe up at Plattwood Park. The idea is to engage the community, to increase community pride, to help with economic development. And we know that art is a draw for people, restaurants are a draw, but so is art. And so this project would be, we would put out calls for concepts. We would put together a call for concepts that would ask for what kind of art we were looking for, what kind of, what areas we were focusing on. You know, we would have to, we would put things in it like it would need to be maintenance free, it would need to be weatherproof. So we would, it needs to be family friendly. So we would put in all those requirements. We would send it out, ask artists to respond to that with their concepts, so it would be kind of a sketch out of what they were proposing to do. We would put together a community-based review panel. So it would be folks from the community, it might be someone from Parks and Rec, it might be one of you, it might be someone from The Nest, it might be an artist, it might be someone from the River Academy, River Academy?
Coastal Academy.
Coastal Academy. So we put together maybe a group of 10 or 12 people, review the concepts, come up with maybe a couple, depending on what the budget is, come up with a couple, and then invite those artists, pay those artists, to do a more detailed proposal of what their art would look like. We would then pick either one, depends, you know, depends on what it is, depends on how much it costs. We would pick one, we could pick a couple, could be murals, could be, you know, I was telling Carol, I was in Wethersfield a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago. They have a project where they invite people to take old bikes and decorate them, and they're just, they're on Main Street. It could be kids, could be, say, kids from high school, kids from elementary school, businesses, private citizens, groups, all come in and decorate bikes. And it sounds silly, but people love it. One of my favorite places for public art is Florence Griswold Museum. They do We Fairy Village every year, they do scarecrows. It's inviting artists to come in and do their thing, which is to be creative. So that's what's being proposed here. It would be very carefully controlled. This is not, I don't, I wasn't here when the Iverton thing happened, but everyone talks about it, it's being horrible, so. We would, this would be family friendly, this is community-based, it's meant to instill pride. I know you've spent a lot of money on infrastructure for ARPA, we need something for the people of Deep River, and I think this is the project that would do that. I'm doing this as a private citizen, I'm not, this is a volunteer thing. I'm doing it because I love the town, and I want to do something good for it. I have no, I have no horse in this race, I'm not doing it professionally. If you don't want to do it, if people don't like it, I have many other things in my life to do, but I would love to see the town do this project, so. And happy to answer any questions you have.
What type of art? I know you made a presentation once before I wasn't here, and I apologize, but when you said Plattwood Park, are you talking of mural up there, on the structure up there, or are you just talking a piece of iron art? Or what would be your vision for Plattwood?
So, so I'm, I'm not on purpose, I'm not gonna state what could happen, because, and Carol and I were talking about this, this is what artists do. What we do is we tell them what we're looking for.
Okay.
It could be a mural, I think there's gonna be a concession stand or something there.
Right.
So we could, you know, it could be a mural on that. It could be a lot of different things.
And I'm just curious, and there's all phases and facets of art, so.
Yeah, so I mean.
Then you did tell me about one, some town, and they just did Adirondack chairs. And the town crew, I think, put, you know, the cement slabs down, and then people were asked to decorate the chairs.
Artists decorated.
Right, and they were around town, and so they served a purpose, you could sit in them, and they also were very decorative.
They also did snowmen in the wintertime. So it's, I mean, we're, we're letting artists do their thing, which is to be creative, so we don't need to think about what it's gonna look like. That's, that's their job, we get to pick what we want, obviously. But you'd be surprised what artists can come up with, things we would never think of, because I'm not an artist, so. What else can I tell you?
There's no question and answer, Jerry. Sorry. Well, I know Jerry had mentioned this before, like, it would be nice if we move forward with this, to give priority to local artists, you know, kind of showcase people that in our own neighborhood. Maybe it's just Deep River, maybe it's the tri-town area, you know, something like that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we want the best art, but if the best, if, if Deep River artists are responding to this and we like what they're doing, absolutely, and I think we should say, you know, we'll give, we would give preference to local artists. Absolutely. I mean, what, you know, how much, how much more community pride can we have that the artists who live here did their artwork, to be honest?
Any other questions?
I think it's good.
Well, thank you, Brett, for coming back in, appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Brett, for that. And now, next up, we have Park and Recreation, Chris Morris here.
Great.
Yep, he's our chairperson for Park and, uh, chairperson for the subcommittee for the Route 154 Music Fest.
Chairperson of the whole company. You want to be exact.
So just the background, the town voted to give some ARPA funding to Park and Rec. Spread out over three years was the plan, $25,000 a year to bring a nice music fest. That would be kind of a town-wide event, if you want people in. So Chris is here to give us a report.
So, things are going very well. Not quite the scope that we wanted it to be for year one. Just to give you some background information on where we are with this, so you know, we did look at a couple of different sites, and Devitt Field ended up being where we landed for logistical reasons. Not the least of which was that the security costs for having it on the green right here were gonna be enormous. When we used to do the carnival, I feel like we didn't have as much issues with that, but for some reason here it was a little different. Which was fine, Devitt's gonna be great, we got a beautiful open space, and we have a lot of room to work with.
Chris, what's the date? Let's get that out there, because we have people watching.
23rd and 22nd of June.
Okay, June 22nd, 23rd, just wanted to do that plug, well, before we forgot.
Yeah, so most of the venues in town were a little skittish about making the investment. They had to have some buy-in, because we're gonna supply them with talent, all this other stuff. And for various reasons, I know one of, one of them was not gonna do live music anymore, so they weren't sure if you wanted to do it. One never got back to me, one was adamantly a no, because he's too far away, and didn't want to be, and every time he does something with one of the towns, it never pans out for him, I'm not gonna say who, you can just use your imagination on that one. High Nine is gonna be involved, they're actually gonna be our, one of our sponsors and a beer vendor, which is great. I just don't think they want to do anything there while they're having everything come here. So, but High Nine and Red House would said that if this takes off, they want to be involved in a more, you know, integral part of it, as opposed to just being semi-involved. So I think what we're looking at for year one is going to be more of just like, of one location kind of a thing, which is fine. And then from there, we're hoping to branch it out and make it a little bit bigger, a little bit better. Obviously, if we don't have to have the venues support their own, you know, structure, if we can say, look, we're gonna provide you all this, that'd be great. As with anything that you build from ground up with year one, sponsorships have not been easy to come by, because there's nothing to base it on. I can't tell people, look, we're gonna have X amount of people there, because last year we had X amount of people, I don't know. What I do know is we have a good ballpark for what we think we're gonna get on both days. Our headliner on Sunday is Max Creek, so we expect close to 1,000 people for that. And our headliner on Saturday is Miracle Legion, which is a Connecticut band that was a national, international band years ago, and is kind of reforming, so we expect a pretty good crowd for that. Overall, we're happy with.
What'd you say, American Legion?
Miracle Legion.
Miracle.
Sorry, Miracle Legion. So yeah, we've got some of the places in town to contribute sponsorships in a way that's more of a trade. So they're gonna provide us with some hospitality and whatnot, which is nice, and there's no financial investment for them, but there's a skin in the game for them to put the word out and everything, so that's good. And right now, now that we've got a little bit more infrastructure in Park and Rec, now that we have a director on board, and we have a few more people who are getting involved, we're gonna get the word out for next month and really promote, promote, promote. So it's gonna be great. So we're excited.
Couple of questions, do you still need musicians for this round?
We do not.
Okay.
We are all set.
There's someone I'd suggest for the future, you look at local resource, Ed Fast does conga pop, and he lives on Prospect Street. It's fabulous, fabulous music.
Great, I know, that's good to know.
I know I had sent out the information to Miriam, I don't know if it ever got to you, but what's the best way of getting information?
So if any band wants to do something and they know about it, they should reach out directly themselves.
To you?
Yes.
But what information do we give them to give, to contact information? For you? I'd like to share your contact.
Oh, my contact information's easy, it's just, actually, we have a whole new email website, so, not website, email. It's actually route, so it's R-O-U-T-E.
Yep. Great. Wonderful. The other thing, I'm curious.
Just so, just to circle back, we do have three acts from town, from the area, who are playing. We have Frank Natter's gonna open the festival on Saturday, and then, I don't know if you're familiar with Midnight Anthem, the girls are from the area, I think one of them went to, one or two of them went to Valley, or maybe all three of them went to Valley. And then Local Honey, they're from here, they're gonna be playing, so we have those three, which are great.
Have you included the cost of security? Is that coming out of ARPA funds, or is that an additional cost to the town, or ARPA?
Unless you want to give us some more money, I'm not gonna say no. You guys have a few thousand dollars lying around, I'll be happy to take it off your hands, believe me. But that was one of the, that was one of the hiccups with using the green. We were asking to close a portion of High Street from the Adams Parking Lot driveway to Main Street, and.
Oh, Essex.
It was Essex Street, sorry, not High Street. And they want a cop at every entrance, and they were counting the split as too much. And then they want another cop on the green, so it was, it's too much. Whereas if we're at Devitt Field, we don't really need to close a road, so that's three cops we're gonna pay for, so we need one on sight, and that was really it. So that makes life a lot easier.
For years two and three, do you have contracts set at this point?
No, no, we don't.
That's something we have to think about with the ARPA funds.
My understanding with ARPA funds, as I looked it up the other day, is that they needed to be allocated, not committed, until 2026 or 2027, I suppose. So as long as that money is allocated for this, I don't think we need to have it contracted out.
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's the way I read the rule.
Okay, I'll check with Finance, but I thought you had to have contracts signed by the end of 2024.
Okay, you can sign a contract to contract that money out to the festival or to Park and Rec, and then it would just go into our budget.
Well, we'll, we'll look further into that.
It would be, it would be hard to get a contract for somebody a year out.
That's why we were a little worried.
Prices change, yeah. Now, even as we were doing this, it was like, oh, you want that, it's gonna be more expensive, so that was a challenge.
Chris, I have a few questions. So you're gonna have beer at Devitt?
Yes.
So you're gonna take care of all that security and get people.
We were told.
Certified servers, or whatever you have to be.
So they're gonna run, so High Nine will run.
High Nine will run that, okay.
They're gonna be in charge of all their permitting and everything else, since they already have one in town, I think they should make sure they can import it over there. The Beer Garden will be as it was with the carnival, where they'll have kind of like a, their own area. You cannot leave with the beer, everyone will have wristbands to get in, they'll be carding people as they go, so.
And how about transportation? There was some talk about like a shuttle or something to get people around town?
So we talked about doing that, and we were excited to do that when we had other venues that we were gonna use. The cost, based on what we needed it for, was insane. It was, you know, an hour before, an hour after, travel time, plus the hours, it was gonna be a few thousand dollars a day. What we're hoping, and I'm still hopeful for, is that a couple of the places in town will sponsor, and then we can encourage people to go there afterwards, and then their names will be on the actual events that we do. So, I mean, Red House, love Mark, he's always like, we're gonna be interested in doing something, but then closing the deal with him sometimes is kind of difficult. Obviously, The Nest is there, anything they want to do, we will give them free, because we just want to support them, so that's fine.
How about for students? We've used them like for the fireworks shuttle, and, you know, it's pretty like hourly, they just pay their driver, so it, it's a lot less expensive than a.
We can certainly look into that, I know Mary had been looking into a, an actual shuttle service, shuttle service. And I didn't, I didn't take care of that part of it, so I don't know the specifics, but it was a thousand dollars plus a day, which was just gonna crush us.
So back, back to the beer, are you allowing coolers or not?
No outside food, no outside drinks.
Okay, go ahead.
And then you have some food vendors for.
Yeah, we have a couple of food trucks, I believe, so, which would be nice. And again, it'd just be nice to support them, because the last thing we want is, and this used to happen again at the carnival, at the food truck festivals, people would walk into the pizza, and there would be, there's a pizza guy right there, and you're bringing a pizza. And so it just defeats the purpose of offering somebody that opportunity to make their sale. It's not really fair for them, because they do pay to be here, so if they're gonna pay a couple hundred dollars to be at the.
Can't agree more.
Yeah. And we're not gonna be like, super, like, if somebody's gonna bring a bottle of water, I'm not gonna be Woodstock 99, I'm not gonna tell them they can't have that, but no, they cannot bring coolers of beer, and bags of food, or anything like that, but we're not gonna be on crazy trips.
And at $25,000 for this year, you're stretching it, are you okay? I know you said you were looking for a couple more dollars, but I mean.
We're gonna be fine. We'll, we'll make it through by the skin of our teeth. And like I said, we have, and High Nine's given us a pretty good amount of money to have their beer tent there, and be able to sponsor, so that's good. Couple of food trucks, couple of people are putting in a little bit, so that's fine, we'll have a little more than the 25. But yeah, if we're gonna come and show a lot of ARPA money lying around, and we're trying to get rid of it, and that we can allocate more for next two years, I wouldn't say no. I don't want it to scale up to the point where we need to have too many people coming to town, because then it's something like, where do we park, and everything else. I think the size will be really good, and, you know, it'll, it'll be adequate enough. What I think would be great for next year is if we did get more sponsors, we could not have to have the restaurants put up money to do participation. Right now, it's like, if we're gonna supply you with a band, we have to pay that band, you have to have some skin in the game on this, and it was just hard for a lot of people to say yes, and some people are never gonna say yes. The aforementioned person who was very adamant about it will never say yes to this, but if the other people in town do, that would be great, because that's the vision we have for this, is you're gonna go afterwards to this place and that place, and hang out here and hang out there, and it kind of grows. But year one is always, even just convincing people to play was a lot, especially with the headliners, because we're like, this is gonna be great, this and that, so.
And what's the hours?
Doors at 12, and we go till 8, music starts at 1.
And it's a free event?
It's a free event, free for all. Not a free for all, but it is a free for all.
Free till 10.
Free till 10, well said.
So Friday night and Saturday, or Saturday and Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday. Carol, one question you can answer for me, because I don't know that Miriam had the answer, but maybe she did, and she didn't get down to it. But at Devitt, I remember a few years ago, we were doing the carnival, the electrician came and somehow gave us more power out of one of those lines. Was that top notch?
I guess it was.
And is he under contract with the town, or is that just something we'd have to pay for, for a service? I don't remember, I don't even remember, like, saying, oh, we need that for the money, you know, we did the carnival reconciliation, it was never like, oh, we paid him $5. Is he just under contract with the town to do stuff?
No, he would charge us.
We would talk.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, so Little League will be done by then, so we're not, there's no other use of the field?
Mary said that the field was clean, yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
We'll be all for everybody if it's on.
Oh, so you're taking care of garbage and porta-potties and all that?
All that stuff we got.
Well, if you need anything from Town Hall, please give us a little notice, because, you know, it's always better to have some time.
A shack for like three or $4,000 wouldn't hurt.
No money, I'm asking, like, help wise.
Help, help. We were gonna ask you for some money back.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Chris?
That's good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Just got to pray for good weather.
All right, Jerry, go ahead.
That is always.
You're chomping. You're chomping.
Are you aware that the Historical Society owns part of Devon Field?
Am I aware? No.
So, probably you should talk to us.
Miriam said she did.
She said she talked to us.
Akon?
I'm the president of the Historical Society. I don't know anything about it.
Okay. I don't know how to reconcile that conversation. I'm just telling you.
You should talk to me.
We'll talk to you. I'll talk to you.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
I know.
All right, now, next on the agenda, number seven, early voting update. We invited the both Deep River registrars here to bring us up to speed on...
Don't get bashful.
The requirements for the state for early voting, and what is gonna be required from the town, so... So we have Lori and Michael.
No. Do you have questions, or you want us to make a presentation?
If you could, I guess the questions would come up. You sent me what the state had said, so maybe just give an overview of what's required now from the state. That'll be required on the town. We know we put extra money in the budget because we're anticipating fourteen days of voting and all these kind of things, but if you can bring us all up to speed on the latest, that would be helpful.
So, early voting is set in legislation. We went through our first phase for the presidential primary here at the Town Hall. We have since moved it to the library, so any future early voting will be at the library in the community room. As of now, August primary would be five days, two late nights, so please come visit us. Two of those days would be eight to eight, the rest of the five days is ten to six, including Saturday and Sunday. We, right now, minimum, have to have at least three people on staff at site at all times. And then going into November, it's going to be fourteen days. We will be there by Halloween night to eight o'clock, so... I think most of those in Connecticut, the small towns, feel that this is excessive, and there is some flaws and stuff going in front of the legislation to maybe change or make it a different scenario for the smaller towns, because we just don't need that much time and the funds and the dollars going towards it. It's still very in the air. We get new updates almost daily. We've gone through one, so there are definitely stuff to iron out. We will be receiving new tabulators, machines, as hopefully by November, so we'll be testing new equipment for the election. But hopefully it'll be more, you know, seamless, because it would be a lot more computer and updated, since the existing equipment's over twenty years old, the company's out of business, and they don't really have parts to fix things. So we had someone out for one of our tabulators, and they had to take apart an old machine and fix it, so there's a lot of things changing. It is a big increase on what we normally do as far as financially. The state did give us a grant for ten thousand five hundred dollars for this year. We've got signage and stuff, you know, there's a lot of rules. We had to present a plan of action with the state for the facility and where we are, and that's been sent in. They received it. They will review it, and then they'll come back to us and say, hey, you have to do this, you have to do that. We haven't heard back yet. Questions?
When do you expect to hear back about the plan of action?
I have no idea. I really don't.
Does that spills out everything? Where we're gonna vote and all that kind of stuff?
I think that we're fine, you know, with our plan of action. You know, I literally had a draw-up floor plan of where you go in, and you go out. It's our normal voting location. The handicap spaces are there, everything is, you know, the door handles, the right handicap door handle, all those kind of things. So all of that is already existing, so we shouldn't have any problem with that. I don't see one having it elaborate.
In the plan, we did push the envelope just a little bit to streamline a couple of things in terms of the staffing and in terms of the ballot control that we have yet to see the state's gonna approve the way we proposed it. I just wanted to add, just as a context, that we had talked with you about coming to talk to the Board of Selectment. Before we had made that determination to go back to the community room, at the time, we tried to make it work here. No matter where we looked to do this early voting, we're stepping on somebody's toes. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty big commitment of personnel and space and effort, you know, not to mention the money that goes along with that. And so it was important just to raise, try to raise awareness about that, and how it really needs to be afforded and accommodated, because that's the law now. So that's one of the reasons why we're sitting here today. And, you know, even in terms of deciding to use the community room, I'm sure that the library is, you know, not ecstatic about losing the opportunity for many days, that they would use that for other programs. So, but, you know, as far as we can tell, that's the best compromise.
So once the voting's in there, like when you were here, you have, the door will be secured, there's no other use during the voting period of fourteen days in November? That's correct?
Because if something is interfering, like our past little experiment, first round, we can be audited and held accountable to it if we set the guidelines the way we are, and they do go over them and make suggestions. One of his, we don't have a public office. A lot of the towns have offices, and they're just doing it right out of their office, which works great. We don't have that, because we're on the second floor of the library, so we need an elevator. But one of the things is, when we have a ballot, you know, somebody comes in to vote, we have to secure it, and then there's a process. You know, they like to be in the town vault at night or a fireproof thing. We do have a fireproof file cabinet upstairs under lock and key, which, that's the one thing that we're asking, if we can keep them there rather than transporting them to the town clerk, or having the town clerk meet us at night at eight o'clock to put them in the vault. To me, it just seems, you know...
Moving from one building to another building is not...
I think it's safer than keeping them there.
Just keeping it in the same building.
Those blue locking cabinets that are already in the library, are those considered adequate?
They're not fireproof.
Oh, they're not fireproof.
But they are secure for our other needs, and the ballot's the only difference, but we do have a secure file cabinet upstairs.
Yeah, so that blue box holds all of our stuff, but if it had fire and it melted, we could replace that, but we can't replace your ballot that's been voted. That's a, once it's voted, it's there, and I, we, you know, what would we do, right? It has to be secure. You know, we have to think that these guidelines and rules were set up with like large cities, you know, Bridgeport, New Haven, who have multiple places and how they handle it. So when we get down to, you know, the smaller towns, it wasn't really thought out, you know, they just assumed that we'd be the same. But there's a hundred and sixty-nine towns, and only sixteen have full-time staff, so we're not alone, which is good, because maybe something will happen to make it two, or, you know, a certain, a certain percentage of voters, like if you have five thousand voters, you do it this way. If you have ten thousand, do it, you know, so that we can handle that. You know, we have it easy compared to many.
But there may be room for you guys to make suggestions up the ladder. In terms of the number of early voters we're getting, based on our number of registered voters, which is less than thirty-five hundred, you know, it's not a lot of people. And so we have this huge early voting window for a rather minimal number of people, and that's one of the things that seems inappropriate. If there's a way to make it adjustable or streamlined, you know, based on...
We have thirty-three hundred voters in Deep River, registered voters on our list, so, you know, a city might have seventy thousand, but, and the answer is, well, they'll show up next time, you know, because nobody really had, any of the cities or towns had a huge turnout for the first phase of early voting. And it was a presidential primary, and it was kind of already done, you know, as far as Connecticut. So, but, please vote, please exercise your vote. You're right, because we're there, and we worked really hard to get it to be everything right, so we're very lucky that we live here and we get to vote.
And we don't have to wait three hours to vote.
When you say to maybe move some thinking about this upward, are you thinking an option would be for X size of a city to have less early voting, or...
Oh, no, I think they, on a whole, I think they have to just revamp it. I'm not sure how they came up with what they did. I think they kind of said, okay, well, this state does it with that, you know, but it needs to be revamped for Connecticut, you know. There's states, not every state votes the same way. There's many different forms, right? There's states where you mail in, because everybody lives so far away. I mean, there's cities of fifty people, so it's a different way, right? But we're so condensed here. Everybody can get to the polls within minutes from wherever they live. Very fortunate in that way. So I think that's what Connecticut on a whole has to do. It's not, I don't have any say, any play in the game here. I can only offer my opinion.
Yeah, that experience, too.
Yeah.
So what did it cost to the town for early voting?
I often, I would have to go to Finance and ask them what the, you know, with everybody's hours and stuff. I submit it, but I don't do the math.
We did sit with her, though, when she was putting together the coming-year budget, and tried to account for that increase.
Yeah, when Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, I mean, that was all early voting, so we all knew to make sure the number was larger than it happened, so that wasn't a question. I was just curious, because it is quite an impact on small towns, especially for a bunch of, for a handful of voters.
Yeah, exactly.
At our conference?
If you did a ratio of the dollars per voter, it would be...
At the conference, a lot of the community, and even the larger towns, were like, well, every early vote that was cast, that vote was four hundred and thirty-five dollars, because they were figuring out the hours and the percentage, you know, and that's what they have to look at. That's what you guys need to talk to the, you know, our next levels up in legislation to help support that. I mean, the Secretary of State is new. She's been great, and she's very, we have conference calls weekly, if not every other week now, because we're kind of in a lull, but yeah, she's awesome to talk to. If you have an idea, shoot her an email. She'll answer. She gets back to you. It's a very different way than it has been in the past years when, I never talked to anybody there. But it's also a lot more demand on this job. This is a job now. It's not a couple hours, you know, to do the, and do an election. It's a very different thing. It's a real job.
So both of you guys are there every day?
No, we're there...
During early voting?
Early voting, yeah.
Early voting, so you're both there every day?
We shared it, like one did one day and I, and then the other one, because I work full-time.
Yep, well, that's what I'm asking, because it's, you know...
This is really hard for someone that works full-time. Luckily, Michael's retired, but for me...
I think we said in the plan that there would be one registrar on duty all the time, along with the staff. So I think that's one of the ways, places where we tried to offer a more streamlined solution for our particular needs.
And we all get along, but by rights, there's towns and cities that the parties don't get along.
Yeah, right.
And they would never tolerate that. They would need to be there all the time, watching each other. We're very lucky here.
So it remains to be seen what they're gonna say.
Yeah, because they cannot deny one party not to be there. Like, that is something they won't do. So if I demand, because of my party, that I have to be in the room, and I don't trust him, or then, by rights, that's why we're here. So luckily, we get along, and we're, and the thing is, we need to try to keep it fair in whoever we hire between Dems and Republicans. And, you know, we have a lot, we have fourteen hundred unaffiliated voters in town, so, and then you split the rest between the Dems and the Republicans. So there's more unaffiliated, so we're kind of lucky that we have, we can have that coverage, and then one of us, but yeah, no, it's a very touchy, touchy situation.
And how did the library receive you kind of taking over there?
Susan's okay. She liked your suggestion of them being able to use upstairs, you know, for some programs for kids and stuff.
We offered maybe any community groups that get displaced over there, we could find them a spot in the auditorium, you know, free of charge or whatever for their meetings or something.
Yeah, she did like that idea.
Try to work with them, because we're taking over their room.
And I know that she has a lot of summer programs, you know, so hopefully, maybe they can do some outside. I feel so, because I'm also the president of Friends, so I feel a little guilty that, you know, it's like my other hat is, I have to be nice.
To evolve.
Voting at the elementary school?
It's hard for me.
Think of another location, possibly, or even...
We would have to close the, that gym and the whole area off, which, and we don't, we also have a line of...
Your impacted more people.
Physical, you know, we're moment, so that others, yeah. We did one vote there for COVID, because we needed the room, the space, and it's really too big for us. I mean, we just have to gym even with COVID.
There was some talk about, you know, kind of along Catherine's line, where we were like, oh, for August, we could use this space, and then November, we could... And they said that when they presented their action plan, they, you have to pick a dedicated place and just show how it's gonna work forever. So that's why we said, we already vote in the community room. That makes the most sense.
Yeah, for now.
But it does impact the library, you know.
I don't, without, you know, structured changes, I can't see a space for the registrar's office right now. Let's face it, we're both elected. We're on a ballot, so we might not be there, so you have to take it kind of serious for the next, whoever goes in, right? They're gonna have to figure it out, too.
So I just want to comment, too. The election calendar is put together about a year ahead of time. I mean, that's information that can be known, and I think I would encourage you to make sure that all the departments and everybody's familiar with those early voting days, including the library, so that it becomes more routine for them to say, oh, okay, well, we can't schedule things during this period of time. That's early voting. You know, once we get used to this, a couple of years down the road, it'll, I think, go be more routine.
That's a good idea. All right, well, thank you for all you did, you know. Anybody have any questions?
We'll let you know if we get any feedback.
Yeah, let us know.
Yeah, we tried to really keep you in the loop, you know, for you and that stuff that we get, because we don't know until, you know, we did attend our, we have a conference twice a year, and, you know, normally, we, I've gone and there's not much going on, right? But now, I have to go, you know, because there's so much going on, there's so many changes consistently, and things that come up, it's a very, like I said, it's a job. It's a very different job than it used to be.
And the new tabulators, are those paid for by the state?
Yes, yes. Thank gosh.
Thank you, yeah.
Not sure what will go with them, but yes. And I don't really know what they'll be, you know, like, there's a couple they're looking at, so it's still there. They were, there was talk that it wasn't gonna happen, because it would be something new, plus early vote, you know, there's a lot of new. There is a huge, there's a lot, registers keep their job for a very long time, like, very long, multiple years, and there is a huge, they're just leaving.
Exodus, yeah.
The exit is so many. I can't even tell you, like, I feel bad for towns, because we don't, you know, what are you gonna do? But they just can't. It's not gonna, we need younger people to get involved, you know, not, because they're all leaving. They're like older, the older generation. You know, they did the poll thing, you know.
I like that poll thing.
I love that poll thing. Let's go back to the basics.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll chat about any questions. We'll try to keep you updated as soon as we're here.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks, Susan, for getting up her community room.
Thank you, Susan, and the library, of course.
And the Friends.
And the Friends.
Especially the Friends, right?
Planning and zoning, new fee schedule. So Tony Volokh's here from Planning and Zoning.
All right. Got you home, because you already have one, huh?
I made copies, I'm sorry.
All right, that's fine. Okay, so, I feel like I did this once before, or last year.
Yes, and it did look like you had already presented, and it was supposed to move forward, but if you could just bring us up to speed, that would be great.
So, oh, basically, so we'd sat down a long time ago and we talked about doing, um, online permitting. And we'd realized that no one had gone through the fee schedule in years. Um, so what we did was went down, we looked at Essex, Killingworth, um, Chester, Haddon and Westbrook. And then we just filed, and narrowed it down to just Chester and Essex, because Westbrook had, a few of them had some very strange ways of calculating and stuff. Um, so anyway, quickly, zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, zoning map and P O C D, um, and administrative zoning permits all went up by like five bucks each, because we were kind of shy on that. We're still a little below Essex with these numbers, but we're right where, kind of where Chester is, so we do about the same amount of business.
Okay.
Can I just ask, make a comment on that? I'm just looking at this quickly, because I just saw it for the first time tonight. Five bucks is easy, but the increases are different. Sometimes it's twenty-five percent, sometimes it's thirty, sometimes it's ten percent. Um, so your, your premise here is aligning them with Chester and Essex primarily?
Yep.
So they were misaligned to a degree, that's why the increases are not uniform?
Correct, and then, so some of them were just kind of ridiculous. We had the, you know, minor subdivision, major subdivision, and they're basically reviewing the same thing either way, so we just made them the same, you know, same permit fee. Um, same thing with special permit, we were a little low there, and then they also had this weird, you know, multiplier. It's fifty dollars per acre plus ten dollars a hundred square feet, so we just simplified it, made it three hundred dollars, because that was the average. Um, so that was pretty much it. The only thing that we noticed that we didn't charge for was submitting the zoning map or, and we didn't have a flood hazard fee in there. Um, so we, we put that in there, so that should be in there going forward.
So how will you explain this? I think it's great that you're doing this, it's overdue and we, it was supposed to be done a year ago, but to the public, I mean, some of these is three hundred percent increase, two hundred and fifty percent increase, any thoughts on how you're gonna position it?
So I, I think what we're gonna have to do is take, um, a bunch of our special permits and say, look, these are right around three hundred dollars. It's not really an increase, it's just, we've tried to simplify it, because once you tally up fifty dollars per acre and ten dollars for every hundred square feet, you're right around three hundred dollars anyway. So I, I think we just have a few permits in hand and explain them to them that way.
So these are, these are in the ordinance? So what are your feelings about pulling them out of, out of an ordinance?
That would be fantastic, because it'd be a lot easier to change this stuff instead of having to go to town.
When you went and looked at all those other towns, were they in their ordinances as well, or?
Chester has them in their ordinances, however, their fees that are on their permits don't align with what is in the ordinance. So somebody could question that at some point.
Are they higher on the permit than in the ordinance, yeah?
Yep.
Yeah.
And Essex just has them, has a fee schedule and they have them also on their permits, which again, the fee schedule doesn't align with what's actually on the permit, so we're, hopefully, we'll get that all, um, but I haven't seen anybody else besides Chester has them in the ordinance.
Okay, because we were talking about, you know, the transfer station, the price of the tires.
Yeah.
Maybe pulling those out of the ordinance, because it really locks you into ever changing the price based on what's going on without rewriting it, go to a town meeting, all those things.
Or maybe you put general verbiage in there that says fees will be charged for X, Y and Z prices, uh, currently kept in the planning and zoning department.
Exactly, you just have a general verbiage then.
Or you just do it every year.
Yeah.
You know, bring like, here's our fee schedule, we're in line, you know, for, for everything that's in there for fee wise, just a thought.
And then go to the town each year and say we're up in the price.
Right, our, our tire fee hasn't gone up this year, so we're gonna leave it, but planning and zoning is always a pain, so we'll, we're gonna increase that.
So this will go before the next town meeting?
I hope so.
Or maybe not the budget meeting, with the next one after?
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be the budget meeting, obviously, um, but, right, and if we can get a bunch of things to go to a town meeting, like if we've decided on RPO by then, and, you know, then we could have a few things for the town meeting. But definitely the tires, we have to look into that, so.
Okay, any more questions?
Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
Oh, thanks, Tony.
Sorry, Carol, I said per fee schedule, verbiage.
Oh, 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 oh.
Following, you know, the, the change of ordinances, it's a very different thing.
Right.
Per fee schedule and.
Exactly.
Fee schedule separate.
Exactly.
Right, that was up. Okay, um, Region Four updates, uh, so Dwayne, you wanna give a Region Four update? Because you're on the mold remediation committee.
First, first I'll give an update, we've had a Region Four referendum last Tuesday. Um, a very, very low turnout in the three towns, which is sort of disheartening on a budget that big. It passed by fifty-one votes. Um, so here we are. On the mold, um, they're moving along quite well, the remediation is, is done. Now, there's just a few little odds and ends on Phase One. Um, Best Tech did a very good job. Um, but the, the main positive thing that came to all this, um, they changed the legislation. Norm, Senator Needleman and Christine Palm helped us, uh, change it, uh, because to appeal to apply for a grant, it had to be submitted, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Well, we didn't know about the mold yet, so we weren't entitled for, or we weren't able to go for a grant for reimbursement. Um, through their hard work, we're able to, it passed last week through legislation, and so now we're able to go after a forty-seven percent reimbursement of the grant, um, which looks very good, which is, you know, takes that five point eight million dollars and, you know, forty-seven percent is pretty good.
Are they gonna make their budget of five point eight? I've heard some rumblings that it's gonna be coming higher.
Um, so far, I mean, the, the early numbers for the first Phase One have been okay. Um, they had a couple little hiccups, um, they're trying to work out some of the, uh, the boxing and the cleaning of some of the stuff that are in each classroom. Um, but they're, they're gonna work through that. The, the RFPs and the bids for the Phase Two with the, um, plumbing, electrical, uh, HVAC will be hitting the street, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, and I hope they'll be starting on the first part of July on Phase Two. That's the main, main component right there. But, uh, the first phase has gone very well, hopefully, the second phase will go as well, and the children will be back in school come September.
And that's still what they're shooting for in September, that's back in school?
We meet every Thursday, um, and we're following, you know, right along with it. So hopefully, uh, hopefully, we do definitely get a grant, but, um, it's, it looks good. It's a lot better than it was before, because again, the space utilization, we aren't using all the space at John Wintrop. And so that knocks us out of the, going for the grant. And with the new change of the legislation, we can do it now, so. It, that was a very big positive, and, you know, Chairman Lon Selman has done a phenomenal job, as always, and, uh, of course, Senator Needleman and Christine Palm.
That's great. What about the, um, that reconfiguration of the entryway at John Wintrop? Is that a project that's also?
That one, I'm not part of, I'm not on that committee, but I know that's in, I know they submitted all their plans to, um, building Inspector Layton. Um, I know that he's going through them. Um, it's still Arcadius is overseeing that, but I, I don't, I'm not on that committee, that's a separate committee. Same thing with the fields, I know the fields are gonna be going, soon as school's out, they're gonna start on the fields. Um, and they hope to have them done by fall. Again, I'm not on that, I'm not on those committees, but just from hearing rumbles.
Yeah, I've talked to Dick Layton a few times about, I know the fields, he's been reviewing documents.
Yep.
Yeah, the hope is to have him playing football in that new field, I believe.
The problem that, the problem that we've been up against with the mold, more so the mold than anything, is that we're on a, a timeline. And the law states that Dick has thirty days to review the plans. Well, that's the law, but it's sort of hurting us, because the longer he takes to review them, it pushes us back. But he's done excellent job, he, he turned them, turned them around fairly quick and he's done a good job. He's, he's working with everyone up there, but he's doing his diligence, he's doing his job.
Yeah, and he is finding, uh, some things.
Yeah.
Which is great, so he's reading some boilerplate that mentions a different town or something, you know, he's, you know, so.
Yeah, those are cut, those are cut and paste.
So he's really, uh, he is reading them and that's good, watching out for the town.
You know, along with, and that's great, Dwayne, I'm really glad you're on the committee, it's keeping your eye on everything that's important on it for us.
It's, it's an, it's an important job to get the school back open. A lot of people aren't happy with it, but we have to get the school open and try to get some normal living for the, for the children. And then we have bigger fish to fry after that happens.
Well, along those lines of the next, I don't know if they're fish to fry, but the next, uh, chunk of work to be done. I know, uh, when Brian White came and we gave forth the plan, you know, the, the public hearing on the plan, the fiscal budget. Um, and some pointed questions were asked about the size of the classes and, uh, and, uh, and, and basically he responded, well, that's a plan to be taken up with leadership, town leadership for any concept about regionalization. Someone, Carol, has, have meetings begun on that? I know you had met with, um, I believe, um, with Senator Needleman in his role as first selectman and with Cindy from Chester. Is it, is it stalled, are we, do we have a schedule, is there greater involvement to be happening with the, the second and third selectmen? What's the plan?
Um, I think Region Four has, uh, oh, that kind of just zoomed in, that's weird. Uh, Region Four has set up, the superintendent's office has reached out to set up meetings, maybe starting in June or something. So I don't know if they've zeroed in, but their thought was to get everybody through their budget process, the town meetings, and then kind of a clean slate, we could all dive into a new, new topic, if you will, although it's, yeah, so.
I just want to go on record, I, I hope it will include a greater depth of selectmen when they get to work on this.
Yeah.
It, it, it will be, it's, it's gonna need all hands on deck.
Yes.
This isn't the first rodeo, we, we've been down this road trying to regionalize when I was on the board ten years ago, and, uh, it, it's a big endeavor, uh, but I think people are more open to it now, because it, it's not sustainable anymore. We, we can't, the, the small towns, we cannot afford it.
Well, at one of the last Board of Ed meetings I went to where they talked about it, they actually formed, um, and Mike, you might have been at that one too. They formed a committee of just some of the Board of Ed people to figure out who to invite in for the first couple of meetings to organize, then how that was gonna grow out and, you know, that kind of thing. So I think they realize that nothing can be done in a vacuum.
You know, we, we, we had community forums last time, we went to, uh, Chester, the St. Joseph's Parish Center, and we had roundtable discussions with teachers, administrators, town leaders, parents, all stakeholders. And so it, it has to be, you have to get back up to that again.
Right, so rest assured, I'm sure it's gonna be equally as big and involved, yeah.
Uh, just another thing, we're talking about Region Four, I was asked to sit on the interview committee for, um, the new facility, the facilities, um, manager. Um, I believe they're supposed to make an offer to someone tomorrow. I was only on the first team, I wasn't on the second team.
Okay.
Um, so we moved three feet, three people forward and they, I know they had interviewed last Wednesday, the eighth, and I believe they're supposed to be making an offer to someone tomorrow. Um, but this facility is gonna be director of facilities for all, all five schools. It's not gonna come in and change what we have here in Deep River, but it'll be overseeing Deep River, Chester, Essex, and of course, John Wintrop Valley Regional. Um, so hopefully, uh, like I said, there was three very, very strong candidates that, that we moved forward. I felt very comfortable with all three of them, and there were three different walks of life. Um, from municipality to corporate to another municipality, so it, it was a.
Good range.
A, a good range.
Good. I did see that on the Board of Ed agenda, kind of an executive session, and then they'll come out and, I think, make a motion to offer.
Offer, yeah, right.
Because it's executive session, most of the meeting, I said, well, that's not one I'm going to, because they just kick you out. Well, thank you for that report.
That's it.
That was nice, nice report, but you're right, the referendum, I, we were all equally disappointed with the turnout for the public coming out, for all that amount of money to be.
I mean, it was good for Deep River, we, we had a hundred and eighty-eight people, I mean, versus the other two towns, but.
But people, you know, we offered, we wanted to charge for garbage bags, we had four hundred people out.
Well, you know, the diversity of opinion between the towns was pretty stunning, it was a stark comparison. Two to one in Deep River voting against it, four to one in Essex for it. Totally different viewpoint.
Yet it only passed by fifty-one votes, that should send a clear message to the Region Four administration though.
My thing is, I don't care how you vote, yea or nay, it doesn't make a difference to me one bit.
Get out, do it.
Like Laurie just said, exercise your right, go out and vote.
Exactly.
Um, because you can't, you weren't here last night, Catherine, and again, when we had our meeting last night, it, it's discouraging when you walk around town and you hear people say, you know, it's all because of the education budget, the education budget, education.
And then they don't vote.
And then I'll go vote.
Right.
So again, I don't care how people vote, yes or no, but go out and vote. Because you can't sit back and, and come after us, because the mill rate's going up or the budget's going up. You had your opportunity to, to vote, and it, it hurts, it's depressing.
Well, moving, thank you for that, until the next number ten item is the town budget update. So we did present a budget, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen on April thirtieth, and it is a, um, does represent a one point five mil increase. Most of, you know, one of the driving forces is the region's school, um, over five hundred thousand dollars, so that in itself is almost a mil. Um, so May thirtieth, or May twentieth, excuse me, um, please come out and vote, and we'll have a town meeting. Unless somebody moves it to referendum, it'll be voted on that night upstairs.
Will it be a paper ballot?
Our plan is for paper ballot, correct? I mean, it's up to us, but that's my thought.
Prefer that.
And will there be three, three options?
I like the option, we talked about doing an option of, um, yes, no, and then with the no, it would be no, too high, no, too low. So would, so if we, if it doesn't pass, it would give us some sort of idea of how to, where to tweak the numbers.
I think that's a good approach.
Yeah, but again, it, it's painful, you know, it's very difficult decisions were made, right? I mean, all these, and, uh, we tried our best to keep it low and make it lower, and, um, but we are cutting out some things, like the newsletter is something that I know our citizens like, so that was cut. But we'll try to find a way to make it more of a break even booklet, so we can continue. So we're gonna really try to find ways to save money and keep going, moving forward. But please come out and vote on the twentieth, so we have more than a hundred and eighty-one people showing up for this. What?
Time.
Seven o'clock upstairs here in the auditor. Okay, anything else on the town budget we want to mention?
Not on, on the budget, but just along the lines of cost control and revenue production. Do you have an update on, um, commercial real estate evaluation report or the timing of that?
Uh, I don't as part of the town budget update, no.
In general, I mean, it's revenues thinking along that subject.
Um, well, I didn't really plan to speak about that.
No, I'm not asking you, I, I'm not putting you on the spot and don't mean to, Carol, on, on speaking on it, I'm just wondering on the timing. I know they're coming back with something, do we have a sense of when?
Um, well, I reached out to her last week and she was working on her final things, uh, that woman that we met with from South of you, so, um, I would hope, you know, I, I reached out to her again today, didn't hear back in time for the meeting, so, um, otherwise I would have maybe suggested we add that to the agenda so we could talk about it, but. Okay, audience of citizens, we're circling back, maybe we have only two left.
Uh, Mike Joy, Little Seabrook Road, I will have to comment with my trip earlier, I apologize for speaking out there.
No, it's all good.
And Jerry?
Uh, you've said what you're gonna say, I'm all right. Uh, two things, one, um, the art parthons, whatever art parthons may or may not be put into tourism or other things that are like that, maybe the music festival, are they being managed and under, are they under the authority of E D C?
No, right now, they're still, they're sitting in, kind of in the general fund, waiting for the allocation.
I'm saying, if, if funds should go forward towards the history and heritage corridor, would that be under the authority of E D C?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Is E D C going to, are they authorized to hire? Is EDC going to, are they authorized to hire someone to determine the town's branding?
I would think that we could, hopefully have a collaborative effort going on here. Our thought, I'm speaking for the other selectmen, so you can correct me if I shouldn't, but we were looking to your proposal to fund with the ARPA money. And then I would, you know, as we and I have spoken, you, we'd assumed we'd go work with the EDC, work with planning and zoning, like work with the selectmen, so it would be something that, and then we'd go back to a town meeting if you come up with certain ideas for branding. I'm, I'm imagining then we present it to the town and say, you know, take a vote, what people want to see.
My understanding is EDC has or is hiring someone to design the prompt of town's branding. And I just wonder if they've all been authorized to do that?
I don't think EDC has, hasn't approached the board of selectmen with this idea.
As far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but you came a year and a half, two years ago, Jerry, with your proposal, and that's what we moved forward. It wasn't part of EDC, you know, E, yes, it will tie into EDC.
Right, and it should.
But, but my, my vote for, for providing money, giving you money
Right.
is what you provided to us, your, your program. That's why...
What I'm asking, my, that actually doesn't have anything to do with my project, my money, I'm just saying, my understanding is that EDC is hiring someone to design town branding, and is, has there been a bid, have they been authorized to hire someone to?
We haven't discussed it.
Okay. Because I've been asked to...
And I don't believe they have.
...listen to what the new branding will be. And I just want to know if that was official or if that was just someone's...
Maybe it was just something that they were doing as members and somebody knows somebody that can do that or...
Okay, thanks. Next is the music festival, was the first time I heard about it tonight, I think it's a glorious idea, but clearly he didn't know that we own part of Devon's Field. We're a month out, if this is happening in the middle of June, no one's talked to us officially about it. I'm going to have a board meeting tomorrow night and discuss it, but it's another example that doesn't have to be resolved now, of course, of, of events happening on our property without any, you know, we're, we're starving now. We're, we're, we're suffering, we're, we're already a deficit for this year, and, you know, so here's an organization that I believe is part of the town that plans to hold a festival partially on our property, and they haven't even talked to us, let alone insurance liability on our, of a music festival you can hold, held party on our property. So I'd love it if there was better lines of communications that either Parks and Recs knows that we own part of Devon's Field, and therefore when they're on the early planning stations, they kind, they kind of talk to us, so that we don't hear it at the 11th hour and then we have to react to it.
Jerry, you can facilitate some of that, but it also, as president of the historical society, if you can take a lead also and speak with Park and Rec.
Yeah, and I understand, since the first I heard about it, and I, I would bet in his budget that he's leaning on, he hasn't thought of, of that part of it. It's also very late for us to maybe organize parking or something, I don't know, no one asked him, like, I know I wasn't supposed to talk during that thing, no one asked him where all the people are going to park, which is, might be an issue.
Yeah, I agree. I'd say reach out to Park and Rec. Park and Rec is very aware, all the years that I worked there, very aware where the historical society property is, right beyond the goalposts, goes horizontal across Devon Field. In fact, I, as we spoke, all my liability forms that I made up for Park and Rec also put the historical society in there for a release of liens, you know, so to cover you. So I think Chris just maybe didn't, didn't know, or he forgot or something, but I'm sure there was no slightment.
Oh, no, I, I didn't think there was intentional slightment.
Perhaps their event won't go all the way back, you know, if they put up, you know, their, what do you call it, storm fencing or whatever it's called, you know, or something to keep the people, if they're corralled. But I would definitely reach out to them and offer, offer the parking, and maybe that's a great way for you guys to make some...
We just might not have time at this stage to get enough volunteers to man parking, unless maybe that's something they can do.
I know when we did the carnival there, we did have some Park and Rec volunteers park cars and then gave back the, gave back some of the money to the historical society, something like that.
Right, so we'll, we'll talk.
So I, you probably have time to figure out the parking situation. Always gets from Valley looking for, you know, community service or, you know, pay a minimum wage for a few hours or something, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Need a motion?
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
7:47. Oh, in favor.
Aye.